Get started. Good morning. It is September 8th. And I'll call the committee for orders this time. We'll call him Mr. Vaughn and give us the prayer. And then we have the pleasure to both take a moment to America.
Father God, we thank you for this day. This is the day of the advent of a new season, the beginning to the flowers. And we thank you for the martial law that continue to have and continue to bless us if you give us continuing today. We ask that you give us our shortcomings and the Lord will continue to try to do those things in our always pleasing ways. Bless those, oh Lord, that our first responders that continue to stand together, not only in the Holy Word, but our military throughout armed fields. And we ask that they're blessed upon their families as well. Continue to bless this county and father, as we deliberate in the issues that will be in the best interest of this county. All the department heads and all the leaders of the Lord, to continue to do those things or pass with pleasing on federal citizens and good for them in your sight. God, let's go with us and keep us, oh Lord, this day. Pray for Jesus.
I would like to just give a flag. I mean, I have states of America and three republics for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, limited in essence and form. Honor Texas flag. I pray that we can see Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number one, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes from August 25th, 2014 into November 2nd, 2014. Our constable is court meeting.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, the motion. That will be approved in a second. All in favor? That's fine, you move. Item number two, budget amendments. Consider an act upon approval of budget amendments from the current fiscal year and authorize the county auditor to prepare a budget amendment effective 9/30/14 to make any necessary transfers for the four-year end. Transfers will be made within departments whenever possible. Otherwise, contingent funds will be used. Jerry.
Would the budget amendments or premature stuff get sponsored? Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions in the court on any of the items listed?
I do have a couple of questions. Page three being the first one. Looks like there's a request to cover some funds for travel and we're moving some dollars from contract services. Is there a policy? I remember we've seen this once this fiscal year. We talked about a policy as someone got close to the end of their line item. I'm not sure if this expense has already occurred or if we're expecting it to occur and we're allocating for travel.
I don't believe the trips have been made yet, but reservations have been made.
I know that we ran into this with the constable, if I remember correctly, where we had to move some dollars because of the overage, if you will. Is there a policy that's now in place to help offset that or support that?
Well, we're not approving anything. The only thing we get caught on is proofing the card. But we were notified on this one before the expenses actually came in.
And then number four on there, purchase of chairs for jury deliberation room to come from the equipment, vehicle, and maintenance account. I was surprised that we didn't see these during budget year.
I was too, but I don't know if they just didn't think about it, but they had some chairs. I believe the casters are falling off and they weren't desperate to replace them.
So I guess what the department or speaking of, did we have a comment?
These are the chairs that we purchased when the building was built back in 1983.
So I guess leading to the question, Commissioner, if you're referring to is if they knew now budget was just a couple of weeks prior to this, why didn't they know that at that time? Why do we notify?
I don't know if they just didn't think about it when we sent out the budget request to the law of the earth. Like say if something new happened, because they had several casters falling off and I don't know if that happened between budget and now.
How many chairs can we hold? How many chairs?
There's 12.
So all the casters are all?
I would say four or five of them. There's at least one missing from each chair and then the rest of them, they're all torn. I mean, they're everywhere. They don't look good, that's for sure.
So we doesn't get to say, I mean, and need right there to the board.
And part of it, Commissioner, is because we allow it to happen. It's part of the process too. My final question is on page four, item five. It looks like some dollars being allocated for a compliance officer. And I think this may just be dollars transfers. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because this is not a new position.
No, this is the position that the county attorney set up with the new gambling laws. And they took that position for a time out of the gambling fund. And we're just putting budget there to cover that.
Did we agree to put budgeted dollars? I thought when we agreed to that position, then it would be funded by the gambling fund, if I remember correctly.
And it is. That first section of the revenue where it has revenue, we're recognizing some sale, that other revenue is actually sale of forfeited items and forfeiture. So this is money that is in the gambling fund. We just need to allocate it to the proper expense account.
So it's money coming from the gambling fund into offset the salaries, any capital purchases, equipment. Is that right? Am I following that correctly?
Yes, and the entire management is in the gambling fund.
Okay.
For the questions, court. You want to make a motion, Judge, to approve? A motion from the judge where to approve. I'll second. All those in favor? Post. That's four one. Okay, item number three, vouchers. This would be checks numbered from 157656 through 157922 and wide transfers 430 through 431 in the amount of $1,736,009.11. Motion to approve, judge where. Second, or discussed.
You second?
I did.
I don't know if I should address this here or not, but we have a we have a person who is leaving our employment at the end of the month and will be going to a national meeting. And I see we're paying some of those bills and I don't know if that's that's a good use of our county funds, but I guess some of the funds are already been paid. It's makes it tough for us, I think. I think we need to be careful. If that's going to happen within the department.
I think we discussed this situation in past. We had a commissioner that wanted to take a trip at the end of his term. And I think this commission decided not to allow that to happen. Am I correct on that?
I thought we did. If it was on that current fiscal year, they were allowed to spend dollars for that budget, but not spend dollars
As a carryover.
As a carryover to compromise whomever may be filling that elected seat.
And that was more specific to elected officials than this one.
I'm in the dark and who we're talking about, so do I say it? Okay. Our family consumer science agent out of extension is transferring over to Randall County at the end of the month. But he's going to a national meeting in the middle of this one.
Maybe that's something you can do around the country, but
much of that, but then I know we've already probably paid registration and we probably already bought the airplane ticket. So it's already been posted, so what do you do?
What options do we have?
There's still going to be room in meals.
Is that information that this particular person will be able to be sharing for the remainder portion of time? Is it somewhat seamless as far as with Randall County and with Allen County as well?
We're certainly not going to get the benefit out of him going to whoever it is going to that particular town.
I think the challenge, and this was certainly new information this morning, so I understand Commissioner Church's, you know, uncomfort, if you will, because we definitely do want to do right by the employee that has put in her time in Potter County. But it is a little bit of a unique situation. I would guess, based on the timing of the information that I have, is she accepted the position after this had already had been scheduled? Knowing the person, I'm very confident to say that she probably accepted the position and this had already been on the books. Travel had been planned, registration paid, hotel, oh, I'm sorry, airfare kind of paid and slotted for it. Especially if we see it on our vouchers today. So that tells me that occurred before the position was taken.
Well, not to belabor this or not to decide if this would be a way to go, but is there a way that we can assert the person that's coming into that position, have them particular with the travel?
I would say that position is open for someone to apply, but I'm sure there's not even a candidate identified to fill that seat.
Or for that month. So we're going to have a deputy go second person.
That we go in the first. Commissioner, what page on the vouchers did you see that might have just second earmarked that?
I know the airline tickets under the wire transfer is all right. And I didn't.
No, okay. No, that's fine. But I think to your point, Commissioner, it's certainly at the discretion of the court. And I'll look at lean on Dave for any legal guidance.
You can certainly regulate this going forward, but the policy you have now implies to the extended wise elected officials. I mean, you could probably draft, I mean, basically, simplify. You've got the budgeted for this purpose. We're there within our budget. I don't think you can now say, wait a minute, there are legally, I mean, you can't not now. I mean, you could set a policy that says that going forward. And you know, you have to, I mean, question I'd ask would be whether this happens often enough that you would need to spend the time to make a good policy then. But I mean, but I mean, basically, it's a budgetary issue. Budgets are allocated. If they're using properly, it's probably, it's something that needs to go forward.
I do have one question. Page 23 of 36. They're all marked wire number 430, but I was surprised to see two purchases for dillards for two blazers marked at $259, which equated over $100 a blazer, and then slacks for over $100 for dillards. We allow those purchases for, I'm assuming that's tagged as a uniform? What's the opinion of the court?
Whose uniform is it?
A bailiff. County Court at Law One is how it's marked.
Or is that something that is traditionally, that's for, is that purchased on an annual, by annual basis? Or is it something that all the bails are in uniform, in uniform per se, that by the society?
Dave, do we, David, do we have a standard uniform purchase for bails?
Not for bails. I mean, that's a, the slacks and coats aren't on our regulars. I'm sure. Where do we get all the money?
Should they be if we're purchasing them out of a uniform contract or a uniform line item, I'm sorry?
I don't think so, because it's such a specialized thing. I don't think honestly we would find a workwear company that would carry those type of products. That's not a mechanic outfit, obviously.
I guess I tend to lean towards, should we be purchasing those if they don't fall under our standard?
But once again, I think that's a question you guys can certainly run it if you want to put a dollar down on it.
So these are two blazers at a total cost of $259.79. Correct?
Yes.
Something that we probably need to look at.
Well, I think it's a lovely name.
It doesn't seem unreasonable to pay out money.
And currently, each bill is getting about $2600 a year.
Forty percent.
For a year. A bit, a bit case, if we can start buying our suits and blazers.
Well, it's a bailiff's uniform besides a blazer.
That's how they were originally.
And that's for years.
I start buying my blazers, sir. Do you have eyes? David?
Sure.
You don't have a uniform. Uniform. I guess now it's that's something you probably had to note. I would think so. Do you have a question?
No.
We satisfied with what we're dealing?
And taxpayer dollars, that's difficult to explain to a taxpayer, two blazer, that $259,000, in my opinion.
For you.
$650 is what they, oh, I'm sorry, $600, $650 for you. And when we reviewed that during budget, you know, my interpretation of that line item was definitely following into our existing uniform contract and what that might look like. I didn't expect to see this lineup.
So are those funds exhausted any year?
No. There are some ports that I impose every year, but others that just be every other year. And if you buy every year, then you're not going to see $650.
Any further questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve a second. All in favor? Show hands. That's four one. We need to have Joe Joseph, thanks to the I should go three for one.
Three for one.
All right, I can get in on that. Randall wants his suits too.
Do you want to buy suits for all the board?
Okay, item number four, introduce report. Recognize the ears of course. And you get this morning, need to speak to it?
Yes.
So recognize. And item number five, Texas Conference of Urban Counties. Consider an act upon approving membership from the urban counties and to authorize payment of dues for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $5,676. And open up the discussion.
The only person I have as far as the software going, are we independent of our own in-house, under Patrick's software to be trying to cooperate with the county board? Just something separate.
You're looking red at me. We're still, we're still working on little rat by rat, but for what's called tech share with the Council of Urban Counties. They've actually already extended a membership for 2014. The rest of the year is no cost. If you're not a member, then they add that cost into your, if you buy something from them, they're going to add that cost into it and then you don't get any of the other additional benefits. So that's why Carrie talked to me about trying to put it on the budget, the way it is for membership. We're having, it's going to take about five, we're going to have Tyler technology come back before we're at right now. And redo our due diligence on that, which already all been done. Judges got in the game a little bit late. They wanted to have that happen, so we're doing that. The fact of the matter is unless Tyler significantly changes prosecution package, it's not even in the ballgame compared to what CUC can offer, which is actually now a congru to the ANCAT, because they've hired 12 employees from ANCAT, the company that imploded. And their JP package was an ANCAT program. It's a JP's, or Perry Jackson representative was very high on. As well as Mike Eric from the county attorney's office, Jason, and all that. I mean, both prosecution packages unless the Tyler is significantly changed, because they don't have anything to handle, Michael Moore is part of it. And that's probably the discovery, discovery portion, and we're fully from Michael Moore's habit and doing electronically, because we're doing everything manually still. There's more steps than what we have to do just by pushing paper. And so I know in our office, I can't speak for Scott's office, but I'm sure it slows it down. I can't say how much, but it slowed our intake down. We're getting one done more than we're getting for four cases still. So and there's some other things with our stuff, but unless something greatly changes when Tyler comes back, prosecution is going on the CUC package and JP is going on the JP package that's going to be for the council of the counties. And that's not, in previous Tyler had told David that they're coming back with some additional stuff that they didn't have before. So waiting to see about that and waiting to see about one other thing in regards to what's CUC is going to do in regards to the one who's going to let some of the court
Some additional enhancements at the same amount? $5,600?
This is just a membership. This is, this software. This is based on the population of the county. I would get into the membership of urban counties, what is $5,000 is based upon.
And this membership fee is pretty constant. It's not, it's not discounted rate right now, again, now versus maybe next year or year after.
Next year, the population will be more than this.
Well, it's not, it's based off the census, so it'll be every 10 years. So I would imagine this would be the dollar amount. That's at least the figure they pulled, I think, from the census when it was drawn. And that was my question, Commissioner, and certainly understanding kind of the ability to piggyback off the tech share program and what that might look like. But for me, this felt a little premature, especially as I kind of think through the RFP process and kind of hitting the reset button, if you will, with the L-DAP committee and our betting now that we need to look at all vendors. And I'm looking at, Jason, to keep me honest and keep me on direction, because that's certainly my takeaway of where we are, is this will be a significant dollar amount of purchase for this county, not only initially, but to maintain. And so because we have the ability to kind of add on later, I don't know if there's an immediate reason why we might need to do this now.
Well, I think they've given us, given us the rest of the membership until the end of this year, correct?
Right.
That's great.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Which will be the end of this month.
Oh, the end of this month. They gave us such.
But it's a circus. You know, that's, that's handy.
Yeah, if we turn, I'm sorry, let me just finish my sentence here. If we turn, if it turns out that we end up not going through, not going to a vendor that uses this tech share, that we may not need this membership, because the way I understand it, the predominant reason it was brought forward was from a technology perspective and being able to piggyback. That will not go away. We still have the opportunity to do that. The dollar amount will be the same, so we're not really gaining anything other than a couple of weeks. From my perspective, it appeared a little premature based on where we were with the case management software.
I can tell you my position would be, because we are using, and I've said it the last two or three times, the failed ad means what we're doing is slowly killing my employees. And we do not have backup for the individual pieces of electronic equipment we've put together in order to try to make it a good record for the discovery and the reporting. And we've lost files from the police department coming to us. We have all kinds of issues. And what I can tell you, by December 1st, I plan on the DA's office and I hope Scott will join us also. And we've got to have something done on the prosecutor's package. And there's no advancement without that. We've got to have something done. If we don't do that, in the way to February, when the clerk's office may come out of the court's package, because it's everything else. That will be the end of the year, next year. Our system will not last that long in what we're operating now. And my employees will not last that long. And if we are forced to do that, I want to tell you, I would be asking for another lawyer, another investigator, and two court staff. I'll take no other choice.
Well, I do think that's a very bold statement, to be honest with you, Randall, to say that we are killing employees. And I'm assuming that's from the route.
I'm not implying you're killing them. The work is killing them.
So if I, if I may, the way I understand from the Amarillo Police Department, you guys have made some really progressive changes in electronically transferring that data. It used to be manual paper coming into the office. You moved to a drop system.
And that's when we lost 13 cases in one week out of that system.
So but now you're at a point where that has all stabilized and you're seeing some efficiencies, is what I understand. Is that incorrect?
That is incorrect. From the officers getting up here, what it saves, these officers' time and walking the cases out of here. In one week, we lost 13 cases through transportation from Amarillo Police Department to our case file. One of the lawyers worked on nine cases of intake, turned around and came back the next day and the nine cases were nowhere to be found. Backup lasts for two months. If something happens to one of the files and we don't discover it within the two-month period, it's just gone. But when you say we're having tremendous problems, and I can keep on going. We're having tremendous problems with our piecemeal electronic system that every step has to be done manually. There's no electronic triggers. There's nothing. It's more steps to do at this rate than it is if we were actually just pushing paper. It is not efficient what we're doing right now.
So Jason, is that your understanding? Are you aware of us losing data and losing cases?
I know that when the system was first set up, because what we have in place now was not designed to be used for what we're using.
Correct.
It's, it's patchwork until we can get a real case management system in place. And initially, there were some issues with transferring, some issues between, because we've got, we've got two major departments. We've got, you know, prosecutors offices and the arresting agencies. And there were some issues with transferring information, just like there was before we even went to the all-electronic. There's always been some issue. I believe that we've got the loss of data resolved as far as cases vanishing. However, Randall's dead on when he says it's manual processes in his department. Because what used to happen was a person A would do their, they're set a task with a case that would bring the case to person B. And person B knows now, okay, well, I need to do these things, okay? Well, now with everything being electronic, there is no automatic for person B to know that these cases are ready. So things set up there and they back up and back up until somebody makes a phone call or sends an email and says, hey, where's this case at? And that's what the new software is designed to address.
And in fact, a original system that we put in place between And an active regional system that we put in place between Amarillo Police Department and us, we've even gone to the extent right now of changing it because of those issues of losing cases and going to one, including them the same way the sheriff's department is sending it to us, and that's not quite in place yet because the city hasn't finished doing what they were doing, and we're hoping that's gonna totally eliminate that problem. But there are lots of issues with what we're jumping on right now.
And I think the challenge for this court would be that we are really charged with a purchase that works countywide, um, and, and not really one respective department, because I would imagine there are other departments that have inefficiencies they're hoping to really help capitalize on with a new tool, and I think, Commissioner.
The CUC thing is now spinning off into stuff about the electronic stuff, and what I can tell you is, there's about two companies now that I'm aware of that are even trying to do the whole package. One of them is Odyssey, type to Tyler, and the other one is CUC, is trying to do the whole package. There's a very limited number of them out there that just does prosecutor packages, there's a very limited number that do jail systems, there's a very limited number that do, uh, court packages. And you talk to Spillman about, well, y'all do the whole thing, no, if you want to do the rest of that, you need to talk to Nudon, you talk to Nudon about doing, y'all got everything? Nudon says, well, no, but if you want a jail system, you talk Spillman. Nobody, they've got their individual monopoly set up with very few people, competitors in each branch, and none of them will fringe over and do the other, because once they do that, then the others are gonna jump over and start competing with them. And quite frankly, I think they've got it on purpose, a bunch of individual monopolies set up through this system, um, in the way they're doing it on purpose, so that they don't have to keep, compete with the other people.
So, 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 so what is the, uh, the, the path around that, if you would, Patrick, as we're looking out, out years and, uh, the total picture, because what Randall's saying is, if this is, is true, and certainly there's no doubt in word whatsoever, is that we're gonna have a lot of individual issues out there to, uh, address the concerned issues we have for the total county.
Right.
So, so is there a way, and I know we talked about this, uh, of incorporating our own, uh, software or, or what we need for that, we need, uh, an individual who is, uh, or, or a few individuals who are very well, uh, wise in that area to come up with a, a software package that would address what Randall was talking about, but also in the others for the concerns for the, for the party county.
I know you're addressing it, Kim, but I'd like to say, um, how long do you think it would take the county to build Microsoft?
Right. Well, one thing, one thing that we're looking at with CUC possibly, uh, is some sort of combination where this is, this is very early in the process, but, uh, one idea is to maybe purchase a piece of software, purchase it under a term that we can modify and support ourselves, so that the departments see the immediate benefit of seeing a fully mature piece of software like what you could buy off the shelf, that we have the ability moving forward to customize that, custom tailor that sort of thing, and not pay the exorbitant support fees and maintenance.
Right. And that's what I, that's what I'm saying, now, years, as it has been looking more toward the visiting for the future county, certainly nothing is, was today, but, uh, but if we continue on all this route, I think that, uh, we continue on this trail.
The only company you're gonna be able to do that with is CUC, because they're the only ones that will let you buy, you actually buy the codes and have the code yourself. All the others are gonna be vendor relationships and they are not gonna study the codes or allow you to modify the codes, making, like, the codes, we're talking about, consider it the foundation of the house, you build the foundation of the house, but the foundation's gotta be, be X. Then you can do a lot of different things on top of that foundation by adding extensions to the code, but the base code, the foundation, doesn't need to be changed, and the only place you can get better by those codes is with CUC, um, what's gonna turn out to be actually the Amcat program, Amcat was only working with CUC. Now they've hired twelve of the employees, I'm pretty sure, maybe more of that by now, uh, to come and work for them. And Amcat is a program, one of Tyler, been the clerks, by the clerk scoring, by our scoring, by IT scoring, by everybody's scoring, one of the bigger good dealings in the clerk county.
I know this is a pertinent discussion, but we have groups to go into this technology deal. My concern is that we're just focusing the CUC on the tech part, and if that's the reason it's come before us, I'm glad, because I've always felt, the question in my mind is why we weren't a member in first place. We are more of an urban county than, than a rural county, and we should be a part of this group, as far as I'm concerned, so this is just one of the benefits, as far as I'm concerned. There's a lot of other things that we gain back in here.
I think in no way by joining CUC are we getting married to this product or anything else, this is simply a membership in the group.
And for me, the discussion really has confirmed that this is premature of what we know today, at least why we initially brought this to the table was from a technology perspective, and I do see they offer, um, other components, I, I just don't know how aggressively we would take advantage of those today.
When you say premature, Commissioner, what, uh?
I, I'd like us to have really some direction on, on where we're gonna go, as we know, we're still in, in very much the discovery phase of what that may look like, we are charged as a court, um, to really look at a solution that works countywide, and for me, this really has very eerie rumblings of our wireless project, um, that really this court, uh, should be very mindful of the impact of that for us not being involved in those decisions and, and a, a little of the weeds, if you will, uh, because we were very much pushed to the forefront of how could, how could this happen? And so my aggressiveness, if you will, is really tied to, we are charged with a very big decision, and, um, not only from a practical perspective, but from a fiscal perspective, and I feel that this is premature of what we know today.
I don't feel, if I'm ever to share, if you don't like just being a member, I'll pay for that in my massive forfeiture fund by real works to count.
You're helping, you, helping you just dollars.
Our real works to count, massive forfeiture funds, county is on the same as mine, being a member of the CUC after one year.
I've moved to the, yeah.
Yes. One more question before we proceed down. Thank you. I'll second. Uh, one question in respect to the issue, uh, from all this being already written today, Patrick or, uh, as our SME and, you are comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with our decision today, becoming a member, yes, yes.
Further discussion, we have a motion to approve and, uh, just where, the second, by Commission. Um, okay, all those in favor? Opposed for one. Item six, Texas Department's Family and Protective Services Title Four dash E dash Non-Financial Contracts Considered An Act Upon Approval of the Contract Between Potter County and Child Welfare and to Authorize Judge Where to Sign the Contract.
This is a grant that we've had through the county attorney's office for around fifteen years where they reimburse expenditure related to CPS cases. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
I'm making motion to approve the contract.
Second for discussion, Carrie, are there any changes involved, is there any increases or decreases in the contract?
It, it's basically the same now, the laptop that was, or actually a tablet that was requested by the county attorney's office has been added and we will get partially reimbursed on that.
Other questions for discussion? A motion to approve, a second all in favor? This is five zero. Okay. Like, uh, for, for county projects, hear a report on various Potter County projects, take any action necessary.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I believe the first item I'd like to address is on the county courthouse preservation phase three, David, we heard the same with other substantial completion.
Can we have a timeline on that?
No, we do not, when I do, I'll, when I hear one, I'll, I'll let you know, but we're still waiting on the till from the, uh, the bill before the deal, until that happens, the case will hopefully, so.
It's not been given a date?
Oh, no, they, they don't, hey, it's just an issue, they give them their ready issue. So, I, I don't know, as soon as that, I'm sure things will just start.
As indicated on the report that should be given, all items and all of the changes on your third page, uh, would be your May twenty-third hail damage on Santa Fe building, uh, we're in our last phase of that, items really, two, three, and four are currently ongoing at this time, we completed item number five. The next following page is the large non-emergency hail damage work, uh, items one through six, these are items right now we're currently reviewing the proposals. Item number seven, the county extension flat, uh, project out there, we actually have our pre-construction meeting set up today at one thirty, we will go over all scopes of work out there with all the contractors, uh, starting next Monday, we hope to do all the PCP tile, have it completed by the following Friday, the carpet will not be in, uh, until the, toward the end of October, so we hope to move forward with that portion of the project at that time. The next following page, your volunteer fire station three, uh, Pat and I have been working with Park Hill Smith and Cooper, who's German, we have completed last Friday a schematic design review. Uh, we redlined it, I will be hopefully this evening, uh, getting those documents back to Park Hill Smith and Cooper, this is just the first point of us taking off in the plot plan, uh, we'll get those red lines back to them, so before we all can come to an agreement, this is our baseline that we start off at. Then our next steps, uh, they still owe us an opinion of probable cost off of this first phase right here, so we'll be awaiting that, once they get these red line documents back. After we've agreed upon that, then we go to design development, where you'll be spending your time until now in December on the actual design of the project. Groundbreaking ceremony, Pat, do you have anything on that?
No, I was going to talk with the district director.
Okay. Uh, District Court's building, uh, security project, uh, this is what y'all approved at budget time of lighting over there, we are about sixty percent complete, hopefully that will be completed by, if we can, this week, or we can land that project. We'll probably go through some nighttime testing to make sure all the lines are positioned. Two items that I will be adding to the, uh, project list is the fairground stormwater runoff and collection system, we had a meeting on that, uh, with Commissioner McYan, Commissioner Church last, uh, Friday, and I'll be bringing you further results as we work with the city. The last item is our county courthouse here, your south public elevator that goes to the seventh floor up here in this project, we've had a ship go out now. This right here is a, this is a corrupt elevator contractor's, uh, drive ship, uh, we've noticed metal shavings up there, we have visited with them about this, they, uh, now I've got a full team that's come through and investigated, all the elevators are starting that process, they found this out, it's probably we're concerned, they're responsible for all the costs. That hopes to take place toward the end of September and the first quarter, yeah, about three days.
I want to comment, it's for the paper this morning, uh, nice job when the topic of Santa Fe goes in, paid to cover it, nice job, I think. Thank you. That's all, recognize, item number eight, District Court Consider Approve the Potter County District Clerk's Records Preservation Restoration Archive Plan Twenty fourteen to Twenty fifteen, Karen, agree this morning?
Commissioner, I'm great, thank you. Uh, this is your opportunity to review the plan, uh, for preservation, restoration archive for the District Clerk records, and, uh, it's an annual process that you approve, and I wanted to go over again what our goals are, and it's to create digital images of all judicial records held by the District Clerk's office. We started digitizing everything in two thousand and three, we are now going back on all of our old cases, we have time and put them through our digital process, um, restoring preserved records with significant historical value. I don't know if y'all realize, a few years ago, that the, um, legislature, uh, stated that everything older than nineteen fifty was considered historical and is considered permanent, uh, so we did a analysis of all of our old documents, and luckily, we're in pretty good shape because we don't have a whole lot of inventory in the panel, and our records, our old, old books are in real good shape, a lot of counties have had to have their books totally revamped and reworked.
That mean I'm historical now?
You know, you said.
You're permanent.
And then third, improve the public and governmental access to records, access by digital images, and we do that with our Versta Image and also our iDocket, which is a private program, downloads our images every night, and various description people can access that. And then the last is provide an archive source for records that have or will be imaged. And of course, our permanent records are in microfiche, microfilm, but we are hoping to take that fish and film, uh, through Sanders' new process and digitize that. And right now, it's being done in the panel section and, uh, they're giving it to us on disk, so we can easily look up, instead of having to pull book and a big box you downstairs and bring it up, we can easily look it up on the computer. And then hopefully in this next budget, y'all prove that, uh, new server that we can have shared, our shared drive, and we can have our images placed on that shared drive, so. With this, the county, the legislature has provided three different sources of funds for this, um, it's, county clerk has it per document filed, records managed, District clerk has it per case, so we don't have as much money, um, available to what I've tried to use over the years, it has to purchase scanners and information like that, things like that for records, our actions. Any questions?
Is this dollar amount the maximum dollar amount allowed?
Uh, yes.
And is this an increaser, is this what you've used?
Oh, no, this is, this is the second one, the District Clerk Fund, that's one we went up last season, the ten dollars, it, uh, will revert to five in two thousand and nineteen, that's per legislature. And I didn't get the balances for, but I think it took about two thousand dollars in these funds. And I'm planning to use a portion of it, um, when we look into cash management system.
I move we approve the Potter County District Clerk's Records Preservation Restoration Archive Plan for twenty fourteen to fifty.
Second.
A motion to approve, sure, second, just where, all those in favor? That's five zero. Item number nine, Human Resource County Auditor Payroll Account Period Adjustment To Hear and Act, Act Upon Recommendation About Human Resource County Auditor Adjusting Payroll Account Period Without Changing the Existing Pay Dates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, last week, this court met in a special to consider this topic of, uh, the payroll schedule change, or potential payroll schedule change, uh, at that time, that decision was tabled, pending information to be received or approval to be, uh, received through CJAD regarding specifically the CSCD, uh, ability to, I take part in that, uh, lump sum payout of the. lump sum payout of two percent public interest. And it's my understanding that we did have a decision. It's a pretty good carry. It's my understanding that C J did grant approval late last week for C S C D to be able to come on board with that lump sum payout. So we're just wanting to reconsider.
I guess at this time, I would, if we have any comments from the audience? Anybody want to make a comment about this change?
Given I see that opinion, is there any legal issues or concerns that he would have?
Commissioner, I spoke with T B C J legal team extensively about this. They made a couple of points. One, they weren't sure if it was illegal, but they couldn't find anything. They said it was illegal. So based on that and the age old premise that everything was legal until someone objects, they said that they would recommend the authorization because of the severe need for must have on that.
And to that point, Dave, I'll lean on you again in terms of full transparency before we officially take this for a vote and discussion of within legal parameters to make this shift, which I'm hearing we're fine and compliant.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't want to speak for the T B C J. I mean, I understand their reservation was that they, it looked like a bonus to them, which is, and a bonus is when you pay somebody extra money for work that you've already paid for. That is not the case here. I mean, we're satisfied. And I think what they're getting to when they say they can't really find anything that's legal. This all hinges on, I mean, Commissioner's court needs to feel like it has a public purpose. In fact, we recommend in language like that and put in the motion that you find this in the, there is a public interest benefit in structuring salary, you know, this payment like that. And the benefit is that it solves a county issue. And the payment of money helps the employees make a transition to this change, which provides them money to pay bills and such for that. They don't have to go without paper yet when we get. And so that's everybody's benefits, including their own creditors. So I, I mean, we think a public purpose is clear here.
And Kay, just for the sake of discussion, the policy really was addressed to the court in an effort to modify our current payroll practices. The way I understand it today, and the way our payback was called today, we're paying employees and essentially for time not worked. What we're expecting them to work is what we're paying them for. And the shift will move us to actually paying employees for time worked under the county umbrella.
After the work has been done.
After the work has been done. Okay. And the shift really only really relies on a pay period shift. The pay date will stay the same, which I know was an original concern of employees.
Further discussion? Or obtain a motion to approve?
You were, you really, that's a way our commissioning would want to put that in a form of motion.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation by human resources and county auditor to adjust the payroll accounting period without changing the existing pay dates to solidify an effort for public.
Interest in public purpose.
Public purpose.
Have a motion to approve of second on the favor. Passes by zero.
Thank you. And thank you to the committee. I know there were several involved in that process.
Item number ten, public hearing on the tax rate fiscal year twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. A, to hold a, to hold the first public hearing on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. B, to announce the date, time, and location of the public meeting, of public hearing on the proposed tax rate, which is set to Thursday, September eleventh, twenty fourteen, at five thirty P M. And C, to announce the, to announce that the vote on the adoption of the tax rate will occur on Monday, September twenty second, twenty fourteen, at the next regular scheduled meeting of the public county commissioners' court. And I think Commissioner Mignoia has a PowerPoint wants to.
I drafted a PowerPoint really with the assistance of Carrie. This, the original intent of these few slides was again for public interaction. I'm looking in the audience today and it's certainly open for public comment. The evening session that's scheduled this week last year was really our most widely attended public session. So should that occur again, or there is public participation, what I thought would be helpful is a couple of slides just to highlight what top ten had been in the budget. And that's the philosophy. Feel free to add, take away any of this, but just a couple of slides that I'll share here.
I guess I'm confused.
Sure.
I thought we already had a public hearing for the question. This is just for the action. Is that right?
Correct. But I think at all points, public input is welcome through the process.
Well, of course, but why do we rehash the budget if we already accepted the proposal?
What happened in the last evening, public forum where there were questions that were driven directly from the budget? And again, this is really just in the intent of helping to educate the public of what is included. This is F Y I. Yes. This is not an effort to rehash that. There's a few slides.
When we have a public, when we have a public hearing, it's my understanding we hear from the public. We're not presenting to the public. Is that right? Somebody yell me lawyers. We're supposed to sit here and just listen? Strictly speaking, for a public hearing, people have input on the item. Right, in this case. But you didn't answer this one. Do we preach to them and then they talk to us? Do we just listen to them? I think that doesn't matter. Look, the court's expression.
And in my opinion, I think it does well to help educate of where we are today and really set the stage for. And again, I'm leaning on efforts to really be fully transparent from a public, you know, perception. So a few things that I'll highlight here in terms of the top ten and what's in the budget. So this again will not be new information for the court or those in the audience as we were all part of the budget workshop. But fire and rescue, you'll see several items here slated here for construction, renovation. The structural fire engine, excuse me, the command vehicle at one point four million. The next slide, we have for the sheriff and his patrol vehicles, some additional employees slotted in the budget. Road and bridge, purchasing of the patching roller and the cold planner. And the dollar amount again is listed there. Facilities, the elevator modernization project and replacing two pickups at one four. The courts, prosecutors, clerks, this is a software that we spoke of this morning. Eight hundred thousand slotted and there were already a couple are slotted this current fiscal year to allocate that purchase. Employees, some of the work that we've done for the employees this year, the COLA, which we know will be used to offset what was just approved. The county has taken on their fair share of insurance increases. Some new positions kind of slotted in there and were also included in the other slides there at one, a little over one million. And again, that's really, the intent is just to really set the stage and welcome public input. As we know, there was, the public didn't widely attend the workshops. And as far as I know, what's posted on the website is what was proposed by the judge and not what's been vetted out by the court and will truly become our budget. So in an effort to be fully transparent to the taxpayers, that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Wait. Who means this?
I don't understand the question, Josh.
I think, I think maybe it does maybe refer to a whole week's name to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The idea is to present it to the public. And now we know today, the attendance is mainly department heads and employees of the county. Should we have attendance on Thursday, which is the off hour session, which was the highly attended session? The idea is to present the same there. If there's not anyone in the audience, then we would not present the information.
Any further discussion? This time, we'd like to adopt the dates in red. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Thursday, September eleventh, five thirty P M. And then the final Monday, our regular meeting, September twenty second, twenty fourteen.
Yes, we'll be hoping that be within this room.
Yes. I said that, and motion to approve is second on the favor. Passes by zero.
I'm sorry.
I failed to count myself. All right. Item number eleven, county park, consider upon restricted parking. Strictly parking on the county park about south of the court's building to county employees and other persons having business in the courthouse or court's building by posting signs or taking other action.
All we did, you know, we kind of talked about this idea during budget. Parking is, until we can resolve or do something else, the city's construction parking has really become a premium on these lots, particularly.
You noted that this morning when I was trying to.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, and we know from, I mean, well, we don't have any statistical information, but we know from the observations is people say that there are a lot of people from the bank that are parking our parking lot. And so what we, you know, my solution, my thought about it is why don't we just put up a sign like this at the entrances? It just says, I mean, I'm not going to threaten to tell anybody or anything unless we, we could, but I don't think we need to. But, you know, I just come up with a simple little sign that says, our reserve, our county courthouse, court's building. So, you know, and I, or some, or language like that. What do you think?
There was plenty of parking on the banking lot across the street. I mean, a lot of parking.
Yeah.
But they've got signs posted too.
So, yeah, so I, you know, I don't know. I just, this is something that I.
I think the question I would have is how is that going to be for, why is it resolved?
Well, my idea is, my initial idea, I admit, is just intimidation. But I think, I think something needs to be better. I mean, they need to know, I mean, we need to spread the word. You guys need to get off. You know, so in other words, I'm taking sort of a progressive sanction. You know, I don't want to spend the money for the guy, you know, a bar there that you don't have a car or anything. I don't want anybody told, you know, by refining, by can help it. But, you know, I just like this kind of fire shot across the house, so to speak, and say, get off my lot.
I have actually gone over and spoke to people at Happy State Bank. And I, I was assured that they know that they're not supposed to park there. They continue to do that. So they're doing what it's worth. They've also since built a new parking lot across the street for their employees, but they're still parking over here. Okay, it's easier to go in from there to the area.
I think we can resolve this pretty, pretty easy. We just start parking across the street.
And I think one across the street is actually a, and these parking lots.
Well, listen, you don't take their employees on.
It's, and it's, and I'm picking on the bank and it's not all Happy State Bank people. It's lawyers and other stuff that they have.
Yeah, that lawyers are.
Two weeks ago, I saw a car over there in the corner with a state official license and weight on it. It was the judge, it was the county judge, or any of our people. So it was some state officials. Someone who doesn't work in the county courthouse or whatever. So we know that, anyway, I'm saying that all this tongue in cheek, but really it's, it is a problem. It's going to get worse. And so we're trying to figure out a way to do this. And I suggest you just kind of start off so we'll see if they would hit on whatever.
I do know that that's really become an issue the last month because of the construction out on Pierce where, you know, normally we had voters or the jurors going across the street and parking. Now they can't get across there without going two blocks down across the street. So it's, like I said, most of our people get there early enough. For those that come in nine or whatever, eight thirty, they come in to go to jury duty or whatever. It's been a pain to drive time parking spot here. So far, we haven't had any illegal parking as part of the double parking and that kind of stuff.
Kay.
Yeah. I had to race for a parking spot this morning and ask if maybe I was going to get competition.
The only thing that I add, Dave, if, and I don't know what the language should read, but just something to the effect that, you know, public parking, this isn't reserved for just employees. But public parking, and I don't know that the general public would call it the court's building. They may just know the address or just for what it's worth. I wanted to certainly know that.
Sure.
Public parking for business on that area.
I'm trying, I was trying to keep the language simple.
Right.
You know, just enough, basically people who work or have business, jurors, somebody come in, clerks, or attorney general's office, something like that.
Even something, you know, parking reserved for Potter County use. Or I don't know what, I'm just kind of shooting from the hip. But just so the public knows that's not restricted for them, that I would support the initiative, absolutely.
Is it not restricted to them?
That it is not restricted for, to them not be included in the use.
The public, if they're doing business.
Yeah, right.
It's inclusive of them, is probably the word I should use.
And can I ask the sheriff a question? You know, if we post these signs or something like that, would it behoove us maybe to have a, use an overtime, deputy overtime, a couple of them to enforce the parking lot for a week or two and spend certain hours like maybe seven to the nine or nine thirty, something like that. Say, this is not your parking lot for you. Please leave our lot. Something in that effect?
Strictly up to you.
I would, I would like to see this. If we're going to put the signs up and we need to have some teeth put into it, I think a deputy could do that. And if we needed to use a deputy overtime, let's do that.
I think what would be difficult today is those, those employees are not marked in terms of a Potter County sticker or a little something hanging from the interior window to say, I'm doing business with Potter County. Other than best guess of when someone parks, I don't know how they would enforce that. And I'm leaning on the sheriff to.
Thank you.
That overtime officer would have to come in about six o'clock because that's when the employees get open for them that are using that corner down there.
Let's do that. Somebody might want to volunteer some overtime hours and do that for a couple of weeks until we sell that in.
It's six A M.
Six A M?
They come, they come in about six A M. When I get there, I see them heading across the street. So I mean, I know, I know what section is actually parking that aren't doing business within these two buildings.
You think that's something that we could do, that we could do, Sheriff?
I mean, if it's just a matter of saying, making them know, hey, this is our parking lot. It's for, it's for the use of these two buildings. I don't have a problem with that. You know, I mean, if we want to go beyond that, we've got to come, we've got to come from some kind of this, you know.
Well, my main, my main point is if you put the signs up, nobody's going to pay any attention to the sign. I don't know, look at them. But if you have somebody enforcing it, like a deputy, say, hey, this is our parking, please get, please remove.
Well, thank you to have to chase them down and see where they went.
If they're doing business, how do you sound if they're doing business?
If they quit charging their employees to park on their lot, it's a lot different. They charge their employees to park on their lot. Interesting.
My point was that just posting the signs is not going to be enough. So if we got some other ideas that we could throw in there.
I don't, I didn't want to get into finding, so.
Commissioner, do you think it would, if it would do us well to maybe just start with that and then review it to see if there's been any impact? And I feel like we may know the answer, but just to be diligent to give us a little time to think through maybe what those enforcement efforts might be and maybe sheriff and Dave to kind of think through what that might look like?
Six o'clock in the morning, you're not going to see this time, by the way. We have signs on our other parking lots that's not enforced. People do not pay attention to them. Our other parking lots. They don't pay attention to them.
Right, yeah, I certainly don't want to spend money, I don't want to throw money down the drain. So I'm just kind of trying to think of something to do until we can figure out a long. So, I'm just kind of trying to think of something to do until we can figure out a long-term solution to parking. Maybe that's just, maybe we just have to move.
San Antonio parking lot, one of your biggest users is AT&T. They park on both of our lots in Port Shippensburg.
Well, we, we loosely kind of thrown around the idea of at least on employee parking to have a sticker, because it's pretty low cost and efficient. Yeah, but I don't know that we, House White, everybody uses those. I would guess no, would be my guess. But we, we talked about having an initial pass at, at least those, so we can identify our employee parking.
I was going to say, but that kind of defeats your purpose of the ones that are coming over here to do business, that you're wanting to allow to use the parking lot. I mean, now you've got to determine who's, you know, you've got employees, which is easy to determine, but the ones that are coming over here, I, I'm telling you, the main problem is, is on that southeast, southwest corner. And really, I mean, anybody else in that parking lot is coming over here, whether it's employees or whether it's business, they're coming this way. It's just that southwest corner, and I, I can tell you that it's probably limited to about ten cars, honestly. Most, I mean, you have, you have attorneys coming in and out of these buildings all day long, that park over there. But they're, you know, they've got business within these buildings. So, like I said, I mean, I've, I've watched it since it was brought up a year ago or whatever. And, like I said, it's about ten cars of, of the ones that are by, like, most of them now are parking on the street out there on Seventh Street, but we still have probably about ten that park inside.
What I've seen several businesses do is earmark short-term parking versus long-term parking, and employees, you know, mark, kind of leave their car, obviously, in the long term, and they're identified with the sticker, whether that's an employee or not. And then having the short-term parking for twenty minutes or thirty minutes, and again, just randomly throwing numbers out there. But the expectation is those cars would turn per hour or whatever we designated. So it's easi, more easily, you're able to identify whether that's a new car or one that's been sitting there since eight in the morning. So, again, I think there's different strategies, but.
Probably just post the signs. And then, as we get it, definitely, so a couple of weeks to see how that's doing. I, that has a motion to consider the signs as relevant to force, uh, enforce the, or to designate this as being county business or property of business purposes.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Three to two.
That's just three to two.
Commissioner, can we go back to the, the cola, item, item number nine? I, I think Scott brought this to my attention. We think the motion probably needs to specifically say that we're using, you're approving using the cola to pay the, the one-week gap money, because that's raised. As we approved the proposal to change the date, we didn't actually say to use the cola. I mean, can we just, uh, preempt and save the motion? Pay the motion.
I can restate the motion if you'd like, okay, since I made the original motion.
Thanks.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation provided by Human Resources and County Auditor to adjust the payroll accounting period without changing the existing pay date and to use the two percent approved cola to offset the pay period change.
That's great, thank you.
As per matter of public use.
Thank you, that's great.
Well done. Motion approved, second, all in favor. That's five zero, again.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve, donation from Tex God, Roden Bridge to accept on behalf of Roden Bridge to donate about fifteen hundred cubic yards of R.A.P. material from Tex God. And, Roger, not here this morning.
Sebastian.
Oh, Sebastian, yeah.
I got the mound.
Right. Sebastian.
Uh, yes. All it is is, when they tear up the asphalt, they make little pieces of asphalt, we use it. They're required to donate so much every year.
And we accept the fifteen hundred cubic yards of graph material from Tex God, from Roden Bridge. Second. That motion approved, and second, all in favor. That's five zero. Item thirteen, equipment purchase to consider enacted upon the following, and I'll read all items. A, the purchase of a tilting kettle from Mission Restaurant Supply in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents from Buy Board contract number two five five dash ten. Item B, the purchase of a commercial inspection oven from Cook's Correctional in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars. Item C, the purchase of a Dell blade server from Dell in the amount of seven thousand, four hundred ten dollars and twenty-five cents from D.I.R. Contract number D.I.R.-SDD-nine-one-nine-five-one. Item D, the purchase of a Dell backstop solutions from Dell in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred seventy dollars and ninety-two cents from D.I.R. contract number D.I.R.-SDD-nineteen fifty-one. And item E, the purchase of carryall five fifty utility vehicle from West Texas Golf Carts in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents from Buy Board. Contract number four four seven dash one four. I guess, harder?
These are, these are all the, the, the equipment that, that you asked us to purchase out of this year's budget for next year. And that's, these are the items over five thousand per item that have to come back to approval.
Discussion on this, on these, anybody have any, any questions they'd like to ask? About any of them? Want to take these individual or just take a motion to approve all? I'll make a motion that all items, uh, discussed, be approved except for purchase in this year's budget. I have a second, all in favor. That's five zero. For the donation to act upon, except for the donation from the city memorillo of a nineteen ninety-five Spartan bar truck. How much money we going to put into this thing?
As little as we possibly can. Our intention with this truck is to use it. We have a truck bring in the, in the new budget that's coming up. This is an engine that we'll use as our reserve engine until that truck comes in. So it'll be, we'll have it for a year, a year and a half, whatever it takes to get the new engine in. And when we get done with it, what we would like to do is give it to the Texas Forest Service to the Helping Hands program, and they will take it and pass it on to some other department as it goes. After we're done with it.
And the Helping Hands program, they, they provide fleet to local jurisdictions that need assistance?
It's a program where any, any business, businesses, it turned out, would not give equipment to the fire departments because they were worried about the liability. If somebody got hurt, they could go back to the business. And the legislature by law said that if a business or if we give it to the Forest Service, our liability is cut by law at that point, as the Forest Service sues all liability free, like it happens with it afterwards.
So they give it to whoever requests it?
Yes. And usually, if we have someone that we know wants it, we can put in a request that they receive it, and most of the time they do.
Generally, it's fire.
Oh, yes, it'll go to the fire department for sure, yes.
I'm moving to.
Okay, we have a motion approved, Judge Ware, and second, Commissioner Vaughn, all in favor. That's five zero. Item fifteen, contract addendum to consider enacted upon amending a spill in the contract to increase the licensing for power county fire and rescue department. This sole source purchase and fund will be used in the assistance to firefight grant by fire.
This is the first, uh, I'm discussing the grant that we received, but basically with computers in our fire trucks, this is the step to get the software into the dispatch system at the sheriff's office.
And so where would the maintenance come from? There's a two-year spill in maintenance at four thousand, five hundred fifty-five.
It will come out of the, the I.T. budget after this.
Is that already slotted? Will the maintenance start after year one, or does it start immediately?
It starts after year one.
After year one.
Are there any cost advantages? I, I'm just thinking of the way we purchased this and that the sheriff is obviously on spill-in too and, and maintenance. Are, are we paying software maintenance to separate pathways? Or are we using the fact that we licensed with spill-in?
And it'll be rolled into their annual maintenance fees with the sheriff as well. Because it's a sole source purchase, because I can put it out for bid, but I would put it out for bid for spill-in software, because they have to use that interface in that fire truck. So, um, we're, we're kind of at the mercy of spill-in, is that you honestly? Because I can't put out a bid for their software, because they're alone, so, I guess. And, and because the fire department has to interact with their mobile dispatch, so, um, this is just the extra licenses we have to provide for their system.
And the contract is worded as an addendum to.
To the contract.
To the contract we already have with them. It'll be one, it's just being one contract with them.
And this entire sixty-one thousand, one fifty-six is coming from the assistant to firefighters grant?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the county will just be in charge of maintenance thereafter?
You will.
I'm moving to approve. Second, that motion to approve, and a second, all in favor. That's five zero. Thank you. Item sixteen, county property, here an update regarding the property of twenty-four oh four Southwest Sixth Avenue.
Um, I, I want to put this on the agenda, just for, for a quick note, that they did accept the offer that we sent to them after that last, that last meeting. And so, the contract was executed, um, around August eighteenth. And so, that a hundred and twenty-day evaluation period is going to go to approximately December seventeenth. And they actually have to, to buy the property, decide if they want to move forward with the purchase. So, um, if, if they don't cancel the purchase, then closing would be sometime within thirty days after December seventeenth.
True, the date is over seventeen, by the way.
Okay, and, and that is the other thing. I have, my kid is their contact anytime they want to get in the building to look at it or do. And all, all departments that have items in that building have to notify as well.
Item seventeen, jail, emergency repair of domestic water supply double check valves and fire suppression water lines. And D, emergency repair of the check valves that have failed. The yearly inspection by Allen's. Item C, repair and replace primary and secondary check valves for the inlet water and fire suppression system. And D, secondary bypass to the islet water entrance, add turn-on valve for each. Sheriff Thomas is here.
I'm going to turn this over to Ed Dempsey, who maintains supervisor out of the jail. But basically, what happened was our, our level check valve has failed the yearly inspection. One of the valves is bad out there and needs replaced. Original packet I gave you just included the top one that's on this big packet, but I just, I have an estimated cost in there. It was a lot cheaper, it was just a rough estimate over the phone. The second packet, actually, the first, the last pages are, have a little clearer estimate of what he's going to talk through now, once again, but this picture is pretty aware that that is an estimate at this time to replace those. My cat's working with Ed as well. I was, it's kind of expensive, it's what's going on out there, a little bit of compliance up there.
As they say, we, we do have a six-inch double check valve that failed inspection. It's on the spring for system for jail. And we have one right next to it that's bypassed for compliance. Everybody, oh. But, uh, the one for the main water source to the building is the same age as the other ones. And it's in need of, probably being rebuilt or replaced. And it, as well as that, it does not have a bypass to, when we take it down, reduce water pressure to the building, to be able to have it serviced. So we're looking to replace the three existing check valves and add one more check valve for the supply water to the building. So we, if we have a problem, we have to be able to take it out of service and put the newly in service, reduce water pressure to the building.
Which that's a recognition of Allen's, which should have been done when it was originally built, but it's not done.
Two thousand.
Can we, can we answer that question?
There'll be installing isolation valves to all, related to all four of them. We have another small valve to as well. We'll have to have isolation valves to be able to isolate. And your, oh, bring it back toward back of the building and have that room in there stacked. Any armor on top of that to get in there for real estate. If it's work.
The basic thing is too, is that this is where fire suppression within the jail has failed. Come, come inspection time, if that fails, they could shut the jail down.
And that's the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred fifty-nine, as best as we know.
No, that's, that was the rough estimate on the phone. Very back pages now is up to about, it's right at fifty thousand.
That's just the estimate.
That's the estimate. Yeah. Pretty close, closer than the original.
See, the first one you had was only for a small portion of the work. It's not what we're currently looking at now. The project, the scope of work has grown a lot more. If you're going to pull that roof off that structure now, it's time to go in and replace the other valves and put in the isolation.
Right, so you're going to have to peel the roof off there. Good thing about it is, that the building that this is housed in, the roof was designed to come off. So, I'm likely going to have to rebuild it. It's actually designed to be, and both of them are peeled off and taken off. If it is, we're going to have to be doing a crane, front pile out there.
So there's six, six valves, is that right? Six valves?
No, actually, there's four, four, six inches.
Four, six inches, right. Sorry, that's correct. Now, does fire suppression, does that line come separately in the water for domestic, for the rest of? So you can, okay. So you can get more pressure and fire suppression if you need to. If you have to.
Save the water pressure.
Save it from the city, okay.
That newly developed water pressure, are there any strains on some of the piping that's out there? Might blow out?
No, no. Just a second. We, we'll have regulators inside the building that regulates that pressure. But it does come in at a hundred and, a hundred and twenty, or six, a hundred and thirty-five pounds from the seat, that's reduced, that reduces the balance.
Okay, um, any further discussion? I have a motion to approve, Judge Ware. Uh, I mean, I guess, well, yes.
They don't have funds in their budget to cover this, where would y'all want to take it from?
There's nothing in the budget, is that clear?
They have thirty-nine thousand in their building maintenance account. They will need some of that just at the end of the year.
We can add contingency.
Yeah, we have about two hundred and four thousand left in contingency, if you'd like to take any leverage from there. Yeah, we have about two hundred and four thousand left in contingency if you'd like to take any overage from there.
Judge, would you like to have the contingency fund?
Or the overage, the overage.
Can, can you also declare this is an emergency purchase in, in case we go over the fifty thousand? So I'm meeting my, my rules, please.
Want to add that to the motion?
Yes, it's good.
I have prayers coming out of our building on our own.
Well, we'll cover you, so on regular basis, if you need to.
Because I know, I mean, just in case something else comes up, we do have a little bit of funds out that I don't mind using, but if something else comes up, we still have to all approve.
And my motion to approve is under the emergency fund situation, the contingency fund. I guess fifty thousand dollars, I guess we'll use that as a figure of.
Well, that's the overage, the contingency.
And second, all in favor? We got to listen to the director of the jail standards at our meeting the other day. He says he doesn't want to shut down jails, but he doesn't act like he has any funding. He might have looked too good. Item eighteen, executive session, have any for executives session, please?
Yes, sir.
Item nineteen, jail report, got a nice little printout from the sheriff here on our jail report. We have a total of four hundred and ninety-nine votes in jail, ninety-two are females. And we have none in children, so thanks for the printout. Expect that from now on. Um, county insurance items?
Nothing new.
Additional items for our next meeting? And item I'd like to present to the court to put on the next agenda. The Texas Historical Commission has requested to hold their regional THC stewardship program here at the county courthouse November the thirteenth. So I will be presenting their request to you at the next meeting. I imagine that I would have times and places for the public meetings in regard to County Assistance District. October sixth, Westland Middle School, six thirty. October seventh, Island Giro Fire Station, at six thirty. Wednesday, the eighth, Island Park Technology Room, six thirty P.M. And the ninth will be at River Row High School in the auditorium, six thirty P.M. And anybody's welcome to come. Open the fire department house over there, too.
I've got the item I'd like to be placed on the September twenty-second, agenda of the emergency garden asset. Future legislative session.
All those, Dave?
Send it out, bring it over, wherever we need, wherever we need to, we'll send something over, make sure.
I don't think we have, having the action, talking about the discussion.
Yeah, or you can send it to do the instead of cutting.
Anything further to come before the court? If not, we are adjourned.